All right, good evening, everyone. We have, um, we got three pages tonight, so we're gonna go ahead and get started, so we're not here all night. All right, welcome. Thank you guys so much for, you have filled our bellies now, and we're gonna be no good to you anymore for the rest of the night. We appreciate you guys, we enjoy spending time and hanging out with you guys. So we'll go ahead and get started next week. Ms. Malouf, you will have the invocation and lead us in the pledge. We'll approve amendments, some agendas. Mr. Kane, you will have our Clean and Safe Schools report. Quite a few superintendent recognitions. So let's go ahead and jump into the Superintendent Department reports. Dr. Bowen? Alrighty. Ms. Houston?
All right, good evening. I just have the invoices paid between $10,000 and $74,999. The first one is audio enhancements, paid out of East Plus for $12,894.68. And that's for the synthetic inter-integration, and that's district level. JTM provisions, paid out of school food nutrition for $13,966 for food purchases. Just Write Reader, paid out of consolidated funds for $37,364. And that's kindergarten class packs and first grade class packs. That's for Holson Beck Elementary School. Lexia Learning Systems, paid out of the L4GA grant for $17,000. And that's letters for professional learning at Statham Elementary School. MXN Corp., paid out of East Plus for $41,304, and that's switches for Bassa Two, and of course, that's for Bassa Two. Varsity Yearbook, paid out of the Appalachia High School School Funds for $11,000. And that's a yearbook deposit for Appalachia High School. And School Specialty, paid out of the L4GA for $16,713. And that's for furniture for the Media Center at Winderboro High School. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Purna?
Good evening. Let you see some pictures there of our projects. Bassa Two coming along very well. And we should be ready here soon for getting our IT folks in there and beginning to move furniture in. But starting to get wax on the floors and just get that final clean and closeout performed. Okay, and the C-FIT Park. Our project with the Barrow Community Foundation, making great progress there. If you've been by there in the last couple of days, you see the insta-grass going down on the field out there, rolling it out. And there's a volunteer work day on May 9th to plant shrubs and flowers out there on the site. And the ribbon cutting, the grand opening will be June 15th. So we're just right around the corner from kicking things off out there. It's looking great. And finally, Bassa Three, our Performing Arts Center. They're just making great progress there. You can see structural steel stack. And I think another slab four will happen later this week, so they're moving right along there as well. And that's our update on projects.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Muddin? Alrighty, thank you. Ms. Beggs?
Out at this time.
And Dr. Thompson?
You have the March Communication Report and the 160-day count for your review. Other than that, nothing at this time.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. So we'll go ahead and jump into new business, and we will welcome up Dr. Bowen to talk about suddicode of conduct.
Good evening. Each year for state board rule and local policy, our school governance teams, with the support of Dr. Darby, who I'd like to thank for leading this every year, they review our code of conduct in January and February. It's supported them the opportunity to make suggestions, possible changes, and clarifications to the code. American School Administrators also had input and opportunity for review and feedback. All schools reviewed the code and those suggestions have made the changes. We haven't had any legislation that requires changes in the code of conduct for this year, so therefore, our recommendation, as the superintendent is recommending, we place the FY25 proposed code of conduct on the table for public review until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board.
Any questions? Alright, thank you, sir. Next, we got Mr. Ayers with bus bids.
Good evening, everybody. Well, you should work it. Anyway, it's bus buying time. We need to get some buses. We got the roof coming and everything, so we gotta get some seats, added seats to our fleet over there. Anyway, superintendent recommends the purchase of up to 220, 72-passenger buses from Rush Enterprises, and up to five, 54-passenger lift buses from P State Truck Centers. Total allotment from DOE for seven buses, 616, 770, at 88,110 per bus. SLOSS funds to supplement total cost of bus purchase amount approximately $50,324. Summary on that, the increase in funding from DOE provided transportation with an allotment for seven bus purchases. Total allotment is 616, 770, again, at $88,110 per bus. Purchase price for 72-passenger, $135,000, and $136,400 for a 54-passenger lift bus. Additional funds are needed from SLOSS to cover purchase price. Bid was put out on Georgia Procurement website and posted on Barrow County School System website. Bids were received from two vendors. Final recommendation made based on price, overall quality, vendor support, and delivery date.
Yeah, how many does this give us now total for the district?
As far as buses go, well, right now, we're slushing, trying to slush the old fleet out, hold newer stuff in, so we're still holding on to older buses. So really not gaining a whole lot. We are gonna get a better quality of spare buses in the fleet, so it kinda gives us a strategic advantage on our fleet, you know, fleet side.
So about how many are we still having that we need to get rid of the old ones?
Ooh, we're about, ooh, we're close to 50% out of rotation. Yeah, this gets us a long way. If we can do this for, say, another couple of years, that'll get us caught up, and we can kinda slow down some of that. So it's gonna be an evolving strategy for the next two or three years.
Alrighty, consent agenda? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Alright, next, I'm about to up Ms. Wadley.
Hello, everyone, good evening. Alright, so the recommendation is, the superintendent recommends that the Barrow County School System enter a contract with Soliant Health, LLC, Stepping Stones Group, Ideal Schools, Maxim Healthcare Staffing, and Expressive Pediatric Therapy to provide special education evaluations and services to Barrow County students with disabilities for up to $2,938,920 per year. So the summary that supports this is, we all know Barrow continues to grow, and so that means our special education population is growing as well. And so we have evaluation needs, speech service needs, direct instructional services from special education teachers, and then also we have nursing service needs as well. And unfortunately, right now, we just don't have the staff. It's looking like we're gonna be short when we start the school year. So I just wanna prep for that and make sure that we have some other avenues to potentially fill some of these positions. So as of April 23rd, the following critical positions remain open at our schools for the upcoming year. So 12 special education teaching positions, and that's not all of them. Those are just some of the most critical ones that are very hard to fill. Four speech-language pathologists, one school psychologist, and 10 paraprofessionals. Again, we have a lot more para-positions that we need to fill, but those are some really critical ones that being able to have the flexibility to go through a contract company would be very helpful. So the Barrow County Special Education Department, we have contracted with Soliant Health in the past, as well as Stepping Stones and Ideal Schools, and we've had success with them. We'd also like to commit to further contracts with them if they are able to provide more qualified applicants. And right now, they are saying that they do have some more to send our way. And I also wanna note that Maxim Staffing and Expressive Pediatric Therapy, they've also indicated that they can help fill our needs, and we have some neighboring districts who have used those companies with success. So we would like to tap into that resource as well, if possible. And the financial impact, so the FY25 general fund budget does include funds to cover these contracts for all those aforementioned positions, with the exception of the LPN and the RBTs. Medicaid reimbursement funds would be used to cover the LPN services, and the RBTs can be funded from either unfilled special education positions or the IDEA grants. And then if you look a little bit further down, you'll see a breakdown of the chart of how many different positions we need, the hourly rate, what it could go up to. That's just the absolute max, and the number of contract days, as well as what that total cost would be, should we be able to fill all of these through contracts.
That's just all these that we deem critical?
Yes.
So once you get these filled, where you start trying to work on it, we pray this happens, but you'll have to start looking at filling all the roles?
So my hope is, because we're going into May, the interrelated positions, those are typically easier to fill. I'm really hoping that we get those filled through traditional methods. But these other positions that are very hard to fill, I wanted to be able to like jump on that as quickly as possible to find these other routes, to see if maybe we could locate folks that way. Now, if we do get those filled, I may, and we're still looking, I might have to come back to the drawing board and talk with all of you to say, hey, should we look at adding some more? But I'm hoping if we can have about 50% using this different untraditional method, and then we've got our regular traditional methods of folks applying through Barrow County Schools, that we could come pretty close to being fully staffed.
The one-year contract?
Yes. We've been, I'm sorry?
So I'm presuming we have a one-year contract with them, but we're gonna continue to look, fill these positions following year, or as the need arises to do this without using them?
So if we were to find a contract teacher for, say, one position, it is just for that year, and then that way, the school could then post when the time is right, and they can try to capture those folks who are looking for jobs fairly early on, maybe, you know, January or early February, and try to fill it that way. And the contract teacher just meets the need in the meantime. But if you happen to get a fabulous contract teacher that you wanna be able to work with, there are some other things that we could discuss about figuring out how we can make them a Barrow County employee. If that's what a particular principal felt they needed to do for that situation. But in general, we would not look at that.
The only other question I have is, given these hourly rates, are we competitive when we find folks to put into our system?
Is Barrow County competitive?
Yeah.
With other places? I feel like some other people in the room might be better prepared to answer that. I mean, I do know, and I have heard, that there are some neighboring districts that do pay more.
The only reason I'm saying that is because if we're contracting this out, then the school psychologist is not gonna get $90 an hour.
Right.
They're gonna maybe, or whatever. And so I'm just trying to figure out what we might be able to do to go out and encourage people to come into our system as employees, rather than contracting this.
Right. And there are some people who wanna be contract employees, even though they don't make quite as much, because it's just a different feel to be a part of the system and the community, and they have the benefits, and they get a paycheck in the summer, and, you know, they have spring break. The contract person is not gonna get paid for spring break. They won't get paid for the two weeks during Christmas. So there's some definite benefits out there to being one of our employees, even though it might not be that 90 per hour rate. But there are some things out there that I hope will attract them.
And this is just to bridge the gap, right? This isn't a long-term thing. This is just to get us, keep going this year while we recruit those Barrow County employees.
We're still recruiting and aggressively looking for people to actually apply. This is just having something in our back pocket if it's looking like we're not gonna fill that need. And last year, when I came to you all about this, I believe it was in August. And so it felt really reactive, and this time, I'm trying to, you know, now that I have a better handle on things, I'm trying to be proactive so that we have this in our back pocket and can jump on it, should we see a need.
If we have a situation, and it might not be all these, but one particular one, is say, they're willing to come in-house and work for us instead of an agency. And we, do we have the means that we can 1099 them? Because I'm sure through the agency, they're not getting benefits.
Right.
If they're working through an agency, do we have that ability?
I'm not sure, I would have to...
They wouldn't get benefits if we 1099 them?
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, because they would be working probably through an agency without benefits too. So do we have that ability that we can 1099 them and pay them more money?
It would depend on the contract.
Directly through us.
But there's the difference between a W2 employee and 1099, if we have full control up in everything, they can't be a 1099 contractor, they have to be an employee. But we would take it case by case and see what we could do.
Everybody good with putting this on the consent agenda? Alrighty, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Alrighty, Mr. Sinclair?
As part of our ongoing modernization process, low voltage data cabling is required at Bethlem Elementary during summer renovations. An RFP was posted, and five vendors responded. Low bid respondent, Tech Optics of Wider, Georgia, met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with us before, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. To accommodate any additions or changes that arise during renovation, we are also asking for an allowance of 5% of the total job, or an additional $3,385.15. So the total financial impact would be the $67,703.3 cents as bid, the $3,385.15 for a change allowance, for a grand total max of $71,088.18 from SLOSS funds. The superintendent recommends awarding a bid for low voltage data cabling at Bethlem Elementary to low bid respondent, Tech Optics of Wider, Georgia, in the amount of $67,703.03, and authorize an additional amount of $3,385.15 for any additions or changes that arise during the work for total authorization of $71,088.18.
Questions? Alrighty.
Thank you. In the same vein, at County Elementary, we put out an RFP for the renovation happening there. Four vendors responded. Low bid respondent, Tech Optics, met the terms of the RFP, has done similar business with us before, and are not, is not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. We're asking for an allowance on that one, again, of 5%, which totals $3,860.78. So the financial impact total is $77,215.50 as bid, $3,860.78 for the change allowance, for grand total of $81,076.28 from SLOSS funds. The superintendent recommends awarding the bid for low voltage data cabling at County Line Elementary to low bid respondent, Tech Optics of Wider, Georgia, in the amount of $77,215.50, an additional amount of $3,860.78 for changes and additions, for a grand total organization of $81,076.28.
Questions? Consent? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Mr. Webb?
All right, good evening. The premise of bringing these items to you tonight is to be in compliance with Board Policy DJED, which states that purchases in the aggregate of $75,000 or greater for the fiscal year shall be approved by the Board of Education. Each of the following contracts has language allowing for cost and work scope increases on an annual basis. So the first one we have is Yellowstone, our grounds contractor. The recommendation is that the superintendent recommends an increase to the contract with Yellowstone Landscape for grounds care at all BCS locations. In the spring of 2023, the Board of Education approved an annual contract with Yellowstone for the management and care of the grounds at all Barrow County school locations. The guaranteed maximum price amount will be increased to reflect, one, a 3.4% CPI increase per approved contract language, and two, cost for system-wide campus improvements. Improvement costs are based on unit pricing that was submitted and approved by the Board as part of the RFP process in spring 2023. The current contract is for $665,000. The recommended increase will push the maximum amount of the contract to $791,000. Due to increased costs, Yellowstone has asked for a contract increase for their base services. Additionally, Barrow County Schools has increased the work scope for Yellowstone for FY25, including system-wide improvements and additional acreage to maintain.
Questions? Consent?
Alright, the second one is for Republic. Republic takes care of the waste at our schools. Superintendent recommends an increase to the unit price contract with Republic Waste for trash removal at all BCS locations. In the spring of 2023, the Board approved an annual contract with Republic Waste for the removal of trash waste from all Barrow County schools via closed containers and open-top dumpsters. The Board approved contract is renewable annually for up to four years and has provisions for annual cost increases. The Board approved the contract for $211,000. The recommended increases will push the estimated unit price contract to $227,000. Republic has asked for a cost increase due to increased cost per the Consumer Price Index and increased service at new locations. And the CPI for their industry was 5.35% year over year.
Questions?
Greg, is this a rolling contract? We did it for four years originally?
Yes.
Right, and so we're just, they're just looking, are we extending the contract for another year, or we just?
We're, we're rolling the contract over to next year. We're not extending the end of the contract. It's still, I believe, four years from 2023.
Consent?
Alright, I believe the next one is for Primero Staffing. The superintendent recommends increasing the contracted unit cost of custodial labor service between Primero Staffing and Barrow County Schools. July 2023, the Board of Education approved a unit price annual contract with Primero for the supply of custodial labor at selected Barrow County schools. The Board approved contract is renewable annually and has provisions for annual cost increases. The estimate for Primero Staffing services in FY25 is $4,896,000. The Primero Staffing contract will be increased to reflect, one, increased worker comp cost as part of the approved unit cost, and two, additional workers due to increased square footage of Primero Staffing service areas as compared to fiscal year '24 budgetary estimates.
Questions? Consent? Thank you, sir.
Next one is for Power and Energy Services, and this is for a contract with a company that does generator work for us. The superintendent recommends allowing the possible expenditure of funds above $75,000 with Power and Energy in fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25. June 2022, Power and Energy was the successful bidder for generator preventive maintenance service and generator repairs at all Barrow County school locations. Power and Energy has also been awarded an additional contract via RFP to change out the existing PDC generators which serve the building and the main IT server room. The financial impact above $75,000 in either FY24 or FY25 is not expected to be more than $20,000. The PDC project will not be completed until the fall of '24, which bridges the fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25. The combined cost of the annual generator PMs, generator repairs, and the PDC project may exceed $75,000 within a budget year. Per Board Policy DJED, maintenance request approval to spend more than $75,000 with a vendor within a fiscal year.
How much more than $75,000?
Right now, we're at $65,000, and the generator PO is $56,000. So we've spent about $10,000 this year on inspections and repairs. I don't expect us to go much over it, but I'm trying to make sure that we plan ahead, and in case we do have an emergency generator service, we can get it taken care of and already have Board approval.
Well, I'm fine with doing that, I just think there needs to be a limit on it.
I said $20,000 not dollars in here.
Right, but I'm saying you're recommending allowing the possible expenditure of funds above $75,000, okay?
So...
So I'm, you know, how much over 75 is?
Not to exceed $20,000.
Right now, I'm not to exceed $20,000.
$20,000 in either year.
Right. So you're saying this is gonna be enough, so do we put a limit on it? I mean, do we just approve $75,000, or?
We're approving 75 plus a possible another 20 if he needs it, without having to come back to us.
So Ms. Stevens, if the total of what I spend paying this vendor within a fiscal year exceeds $75,000, whether I have three quotes from them or not, I need to bring it to the Board for approval. And I'm just trying to be out the front of any situation that might occur where we need to do a repair on a generator. And we're close to that $75,000 now, and I'm just trying to bring it for the approval to get up to $95,000 within a fiscal year.
Okay, well, can we just say $95,000?
Sure.
And I need a limit here, because when you say possibly above, how much?
It says in the financial impact, it doesn't in the rationale, but it does in the financial impact.
I just want it to be clear.
Do you want us?
I'm good with it, I'm just saying.
So do you want me to adjust the wording in there?
I would like for it to just say up to $95,000. Is that what we're looking at?
So it says the financial impact above $75,000 is not expected to be more than $20,000 in either year.
Right.
It's the same thing. Then he'd have to come to us.
He has to come to us.
This is just so he doesn't have to come back to us. Right, if it's more than 95, you could be coming back to us.
Of that $75,000, $56,000 is gonna be tied up both this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
I get that, I understand that. I'm just saying, to me, the way this is worded is, there's no limit, you know, this $20,000 now, but it could be more than that. So it might exceed the 75, or the 95, so I'm just saying...
I'm saying because it says you're not expected, it could be.
If we go over the 95, there will be an email that I send to Ms. Houston telling her that we went over it and that we had an emergency, and we'll also be bringing it to you at the next...
Has to come back to the Board. Okay, that's fine, that's all I needed to know. I'm good, thank you.
Consent? Thank you, sir.
We got one more. Athens Janitorial, the superintendent recommends an increase to the contract with Athens Janitorial for custodial supplies and equipment repair at all BCS locations. In June 2020, the Board of Education approved an annual contract with Athens Janitorial for the custodial supplies and equipment repair for all Barrow County schools. The Board approved contract is renewable annually through June 2026 and has provisions for annual cost increases. The Board approved the contract amount of $468,000. The recommended increase will push the maximum contract amount to $490,000. Athens Janitorial has asked for a cost increase due to increased cost per the Consumer Price Index and increased services at Bassa Two. I said new locations, but it's Bassa Two. CPI was 3% for them this year.
Questions? Consent? Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Freddy? Purna?
Okay, we talked a great deal about growth in our district and the impact that's likely to have on us as a district. One of the things that we've also talked about as being a way to plan for and deal with that growth is classroom pods. We're asking the superintendent to recommend a guaranteed maximum price of $3.9 million from Charles Black Construction for site work and utilities associated with the installation of mobile classroom units. Mobile classroom units are needed... Mobile classroom units are needed at multiple locations around the district, including Appalachian High School, Wyandere Barrel High School, and County Line Elementary School. These units will be put in place or would be put in place by the start of the 2025-2026 school year. The first step in this process is planning and preparation of the sites. So a second guaranteed maximum price for the units themselves and the installation of the units will be presented at a future date. And just to kind of step back for a moment, in November of 2021, the board approved Charles Black Construction as construction manager for non-state funded projects, including pods and mobile units. And projects over $75,000 in value are to be brought to the board for approval. To take a, take another view of this, to accommodate system growth as state need and capital project entitlement funding accumulate, it's necessary to purchase and install multiple mobile classroom units. Appalachian High School and Wyandere Barrel High School are at or above capacity, and a mobile unit at County Line Elementary School would allow this campus to serve as a Winder Cluster pre-K facility. With the Horizon Program moving from the former Bethlehem Elementary School to the pod at the Innovation Campus this fall, the former Bethlehem Elementary School building would then become the Appalachian Cluster pre-K facility. The Horizon Program relocation and the development of central pre-K facilities align with our system strategic plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Talked about this at the retreat. I'm just thinking ahead too about the growth, and she mentioned maybe growing up? That just not an option at all? Like, you don't want to have stairs? Is that a thing or?
And I, and I will follow up too. Like, I have, like, had it confirmed some of the, and I know it's Squidneck County, different things going on, different money, but they would, I know of a few schools where they left, like, a third floor unfinished and just sectioned off, and then later on went back and finished it with anticipated growth and extra money and resources.
Sure. So there's two different things there. One, building on top of a school, it's going to impact that school below it, obviously, and really, for all intents and purposes, shut that down, you know, while that were to take place. So it makes it difficult, it would make it difficult to do that at an active campus, building a new school and having a, you know, a third story or something like that and unfinished, you know, that, that certainly could be a consideration if, you know, budget becomes an issue and you can't quite get where you want to go.
An idea to grow up.
I'm surprised though, I was a little taken aback at how much it was just for utilities for pods.
Right. Well, remember, this is a guaranteed maximum price, so it doesn't mean we're going to spend that amount. And our construction manager has already done some preliminary work to arrive at that number, so they didn't just swipe it out of the air, but, but they, they got there. But they've got to do a lot more, you know, research and to get to a final number. There's just a lot in the know when you're dealing with a site and things underground. It makes it difficult to really get...
But would you say this is sort of a stock gap to get us to where we, when we can build another school for these purposes? And I mean, it's all over, all over the, the school district.
Right. So currently, the state shows a surplus with the opening of Austin Road Elementary. We have a surplus of 44 elementary classrooms. At the middle school level, we have a surplus of 10. At the high school level, when we open Bassett Two, we'll have somewhere in the neighborhood of a surplus of 30. So the state is saying, we don't have any money for you to build a new school. And we can, we can foot that bill entirely by ourselves if we want, like we did at Austin Road Elementary, but I don't think we want to make a practice of that. And so, yes, this is a way for us to, to kind of bridge that gap until we have accumulated state dollars to a point where we can make an application and build, build new classrooms.
So how many, how much? The last time we bought or put a mobile classroom unit on a pod, how much did we pay for the classrooms themselves? Off the top of your head?
Roughly 1.4 million for 16 thousand.
So, and that's what we're looking at now, right?
That was for the pod itself, not any of the site prep work.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the pod itself.
Right.
Goes down to water, sewer, and power infrastructure to be ready to place. That's what we're talking about tonight.
So we're looking at roughly, excluding inflationary numbers, we're looking at roughly dollars for three pods?
Over eight as a guaranteed maximum price. Yes.
Over eight million dollars for three pods.
Square feet, so if you do the math, it's about half the cost of a building, plus we can turn it around in a year versus three years. So as Mr. Bailey said, it's kind of that financial stock gap in between and the calendar gap that we're trying to bridge.
When we're paying for this, I want to look...
SLOSS funds.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Consent?
Okay, this next item is Golden Productions Amphitheater Management Contract Increase. We're asking the superintendent to recommend an increase to the contract with Golden Productions for management of the Innovation Amphitheater. In the fall of 2021, the Board of Education approved a contract with GPI for management of the amphitheater. GPI has requested an increase of 5% to their contract. Current contract amount is $80,004. A 5% increase would push the contract amount to $84,004. This contract is funded through the general fund. Due to an increase in labor cost, this is why GPI has requested the 5% increase to their contract amount.
Questions? Consent?
Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Chairman, before Ms. Houston gets started, we have just basically approved a lot of money with education. The price of education is not going down. And I'll say to the people in the room, if you're a leader in the building, your department, if y'all were doing such a great job educating these kids, I don't believe they'd be coming to us. Thank you, is what I'm trying to say. I'm sorry.
All right, this first one is the Arts Now contract. So Arts Now delivers arts-integrated learning solutions that are uniquely positioned to help educators and administrators make a positive impact on student engagement and teacher effectiveness. Arts Now works with cohorts of 24 teachers for a three-year term. Each of these teachers receive 12 days of arts integration residency experience throughout the year, with additional planning and support provided on an ongoing basis. Students come with teachers to the C-FIT to receive job-embedded arts integration experience from Arts Now consultants, and that's dance, theater, visual arts, and music. All Teacher of the Year, this is also part of their contract, all Teacher of the Years have a one day of professional learning with Arts Now staff and consultants in arts integration and student-teacher well-being during the Teacher of the Year VIP program. Arts Now also supports and assists in writing and facilitating grants with the Georgia Council for the Arts Vibrant Communities Grant. All Barrow County schools are eligible for this grant opportunity for $5,000. And also, all Barrow County principals have access to networking and professional learning opportunities for administrators to communicate, collaborate with other Arts Now implementing principals, including opportunities to participate in Arts Now demonstration of learning days at Arts Now, leadership schools at no charge. In addition, Arts Now hosts an annual principals networking conference each February. So that is some of the components of the contract that Arts Now would like to renew, and that cost is $312,000 out of the general fund, with the option to roll to future years if price remains the same.
Questions? Consent? All ready?
All right, my next item is the general fund budget, and I am going to run through the budget just so that those that were not with us last week will get a general knowledge of what is in the 2025 budget. It's not the whole thing that I went through with the board, but just sort of a recap. Plus, I like to show it to anyone when I can get a room where they can't leave, so we will jump into this. So, as always, all decisions will focus on our vision and mission. Our vision, boldly committed to student success, and our mission, ensuring an exceptional education that leads each student to becoming a high, achieving, and responsible citizen. We also make sure all decisions follow and support our strategic plan, and it's there for you to read. For fiscal year 2025, our major budget guidelines and goals were to sustain and improve a quality basic education for all students, provide teachers with access to equitable resources and training to ensure quality education experiences, and improve academic achievement for all students, support special education students through the provision and supervision of a variety of strong special education programs intended to improve quality instruction in the least restrictive environment, continue our focus on the enhancement of safety and security across the district, to care for existing assets while planning for and responding to the many challenges associated with rapid growth and evolving market conditions, to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students, teachers, and staff, invest in our people by continuing to make Barrow County school system competitive with neighboring school systems and other job sectors, elevate the teaching profession by continuing to build our recruitment, induction, and mentoring programs, and to identify and support future educators through an innovative grow our own program. Our process is zero-based budgeting. We review our staffing allotments with the departments and schools, the submission of budgets from all departments, review of budgets by business services, review by executive cabinet, and present to the board for approval. This is just a snapshot of where we are today. Our FTE, 15,331, we have 10 elementary schools, four middle schools, three high schools, Sims Academy, C-FIT, AIM Program, Alternative School. We have about 1,383 teachers and 177 bus drivers and monitors. Compared to all of the school systems in Georgia, we're the 24th largest. We're 153 out of 180 in expenditures per FTE. We're 148th in revenue received per FTE. Our revenue assumptions, as you know, we really only have two sources of revenue for which we have little to no control. Property taxes is one, and we believe the tax digest will increase by 8%. And then, our mileage rate for this presentation will remain at 15.298. Our second source of revenue is QBE, our funding, and that should increase 15 million over the fiscal year 2024 budget. The TAPT tax, which is our car tax, should increase about 500,000 to be about 6.5 million dollars per year. Our midterm QBE adjustment is budgeted at 2 million. This is something I didn't go over with the board, but after we looked at the literacy supplies that y'all will be buying, we'll be approving tonight, if you approve, there's about a million dollars left over in our ESR funds, so we can pull that over into the general fund as indirect cost allocation. So that's another million that I've added to the revenue budget, and then interest rates, of course. So this is what our QBE state funding looks like. We are very happy and appreciative of the increase in transportation allotment this year. It really increased. We're very thankful that our legislators heard us and saw that need for us. So we're looking at about a $17 million increase over last year. This is our overall budgeted revenues, so it's 206.8 million dollars, an increase of 24.9 million from the prior year. Now we're going to go to see how we're going to spend these revenues. First, we look at state mandates. Our teacher retirement system employer cost increased to 20.78% from 19.98%, and our health insurance has increased substantially over the previous year. So for fiscal year 2024 budget, the 2025 budget for health and TRS is 56.8 million dollars, which is 26% of our budget. Another state required benefit is House Bill 1010, parental leave, and that's going to cost us about $500,000 per year. Investment in faculty and staff, our annual local system step increase is going to cost about 3.2 million dollars. This is where, as you get more experience, you go to the next level on the salary scale. The state implemented a $2,500 increase in the state salary schedule for teachers. We're going to give a 4.1% increase for classified staff on the salary tables. We're increasing the paraprost salary tables, and we're increasing the salary tables for custodial and transportation staff. We're also increasing school food nutrition salaries tables, but they're not paid out of the general fund, so that's not listed here. Investment in instruction, we're hiring 67.5 new teachers and 18 new paras district-wide. And of course, we'll have reading and writing materials. You can read that list there. Investment in academic support, I missed four speech therapists, so we're going to be adding four speech therapists to our budget also. But one sped coordinator, behavior supports coordinator, professional learning and gifted coordinator, science, social studies, and literacy content specialists, stipends for teacher mentors, and a learning management system. Investment in student health and safety, we're adding 1.5 counselors, three parking lot attendants for the high schools, the sentecics crisis alert system. We're going to have that ongoing cost of the school resource officers and the ongoing cost of three athletic trainers. Investment in operations, we're adding a data collection specialist. We're having to replace some generators in the server room, replace the storage area network. Maintenance is receiving an HVAC Level 3 and an inventory parts manager, 15 additional drivers, and three additional monitors for transportation. And of course, our costs are increasing just like everybody else's is, as Greg told you today with his request. So our overall budgeted expenditures, 220.8 million dollars, and that's an increase of 35 million from the prior year. 87.9% of the budget is salaries and benefits. Just to quickly go over our ESR funds that we know are no longer available to us, those included an innovative learning coach, three technology integration specialists, I know it says two there, but there are three, academic interventionist, graduation specialist, environmental coordinator, social workers, and teaching and learning materials that would cost about $4 million, ESR was covering for us. But executive cabinet felt like for fiscal year 2025, these positions were still needed, so all positions were added to the 2025 general fund budget. So because there's such a significant difference, these are some of the big items that we were able to post out for you, so you kind of know where the money went, why it increased so much. This is how the money is spent, broken out by instructional salaries, admin salaries, And so you see that we spend 77.57% on instructional compensation and operations, so it's really good that we spend that in the classroom out of our whole budget. As I said before, 87.9% of our budget's salaries and benefits, so of that, 220 million dollars, 193 million is salaries and benefits, which doesn't leave much for janitorial staff, paper, fuel, power, books, subs. All right, so overall, this is what our budgeted revenues and expenditures look like right now, 206.8 million dollars in revenues, 220.8 million dollars in expenditures. We believe our fund balance unreserved will be about 75 million dollars at the end of this year, so that's... this year, so that's a deficit of 14 million dollars. So after we take that deficit out, by the end of fiscal year 2025, our fund balance should be about 60.9 million dollars. We asked the board to consider some items in addition to the budget that you just saw, and they agreed to look at our retirement match for our classified staff on the Peazer system. That's a 3% match if any of our Peazer's employees contribute to a 403B. We're going to match up to 3% at this point. Once the tax digest comes out, we'll look at this again and see if we want to increase that. They also agreed to $150 stipend for any new teacher orientation. The cost's going to be up 37,500. That's when teachers come to us, either brand-new out of school or from another district and need to get that teacher orientations. We're going to give them a stipend of $150 for that day. And then we also added a 4H agent at the request of the UGA Extension Office. So now we have two people that work for our 4H program here in Barrow County. We also talked about the milage rate. One mil can bring in 4.3 million dollars. We determined we would keep an open mind about this. Not definitely going to happen, but we're going to talk about it once the tax digest comes out. So this is our final numbers, just added 288,500 to the budget that I presented, so our fund balance will be about 60.7 million dollars at the end of fiscal year 2025. These are the other funds. We just went over the general fund. These are the other funds on budget that I'll be going over at the work session at the end of this month, or at the end of May, I apologize. So our schedule is we're going to vote on the tentative budget next week. That will allow me to move forward with public hearings on June 5th and June 17th here at the PDC. And then you're going to vote on the tentative budget of the all other funds on June 4th. And then if everything goes well, we will vote on the final budget on June 25th, 2024, here at the PDC at 6:00 PM. So now I'm just asking you to approve the tentative budget so I can move forward with the public hearings.
Are we approving it tonight or consent agenda?
Consent, you can do consent agenda on this one, but when we vote on the real budget, it probably needs to be pulled out, but yeah, consent agenda. I don't need it approved tonight.
Want to give the consent?
Don't call me out if you want to, but I'd really like to see this done separately. Let's see. Help them determine if they need to talk with Jennifer, a public hearings anyway, but I need to be transparent.
Yeah.
We really want to invite the public out to come to the public hearings. I think the public really gets a lot out of them. I know taxes are not easy to pay for, but if you know where your money's going, it makes it a little tiny, tiny bit easier, and we're there for questions and comments and just events, so just come on out if you can.
Okay, we'll add it to the old business line.
You did a great job, by the way, with public hearings.
Can we go back a couple of strings? I've got one question. Like, were the... Whoa, right there. This is currently not in the tentative budget, or it is in the tentative budget?
It is. You were not on what I went through before this, so it's not in the 89% is for salaries, stuff like that, but it will be...
But this is, okay. Thank you.
All right. My next one, are we ready to move on? Okay. My next one is insurance bids. So two bids were placed on the district website and the Georgia procurement website, one for property vehicle liability and cyber insurance, and the other for workers' compensation insurance. Responses are below. The planning and personnel department reviewed the workers' compensation insurance responses and determined Marsh and McLellan Agency, our current provider, would be best choice for Barrow County School System due to easy and prompt claims process. As for the cyber insurance, John St. Clair reviewed and determined GSBA would be the best choice for Barrow County Schools, and that's our current provider. So we are asking the board to approve of the Georgia School Boards Association for our property vehicle liability and cyber insurance for 707,748 dollars, and for our workers' compensation insurance, Marsh and McLellan for 499,196.68 cents. That's 1,206,945 dollars paid out of the general fund for the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. We have the option to roll back for future years.
Questions? Consent? All righty.
All right, I have one more. Barrow County Government has accumulated 48 properties throughout through tax... Okay, let me start this over. Barrow County Government has accumulated 48 properties through tax sales where no one else was willing to bid up to the minimum amount of taxes that were owed. In fact, the properties were subjected to multiple tax sales, multiple tax sales with no bidders. In these cases, the county acquires the properties by bidding the minimum amount due on credit. This clears them off the tax commissioner's books and prevents additional unpaid tax liabilities from accumulating. The county only pays the tax commissioner costs at the time of the sale, but all of the county, city, and state school tax liens are still attached to these properties. The county expects these properties to sell for less than the total amount of taxes that are still owed. The attached intergovernmental agreement will allow the county to see these properties, sell these properties, and if there is anything left over, after fees have been distributed, then the school system will receive their proportionate share. Once sold, the properties will be put back on the tax digest and taxed in the future years. So the superintendent recommends signing the attached intergovernmental agreement with Barrow County Board of Commissioners to sell 48 properties the county acquired due to tax liens.
Questions?
Do we know where these properties are? And are they mostly residential properties?
They're mostly residential in subdivisions.
Not any tracks or land out there.
Yeah, that's the first thing I did. I'm like, can we build a school on these? Yeah.
All right, consent?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and last but not least, Dr. Moten. It's the HMH...
Good evening.
Hello.
So, in a previous meeting, a team of teachers, administrators, and instructional coaches presented information regarding Georgia's Early Literacy Law, and they shared information about how we are preparing to be in compliance with the law. One very important component of the law is the adoption of high-quality instructional materials, and we shared a bit about our process at the last meeting about how we have chosen a new literacy program. So with that in mind, the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of a five-year adoption of HMH Into Reading with WAGgle for grades K through 5. HMH Into Reading with WAGgle is a comprehensive core literacy curriculum grounded in the research on the essential elements of literacy. It will provide our students with explicit systematic instruction in phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, building background knowledge, comprehension, grammar, and the writing process. As part of the program, students will also receive personalized skill building and practice through the digital platform, WAGgle. So the purchase of HMH Into Reading with WAGgle will ensure that the Barrow County School System's literacy instructional materials meet the high-quality instructional materials requirement of the Georgia Early Literacy Act, and will provide students in all schools across the district with consistent, comprehensive, standards-based, tier-one literacy instruction. And the financial impact of that is up to $2,46,775.2.
Have we done any test runs on this with teachers?
Have we done test rounds with teachers? Teachers were given access to the materials for about two months, digital access, and so they were able to try out some of the lessons.
And they liked positive feedback, I'm guessing?
Yeah, this was actually one of the top two choices for every school in the district. We looked at, I think it was around eight programs, and narrowed it down. Each school had representation of maybe three or four committee members from their school who sort of served as the go-between between the committee and the schools. We narrowed those choices down to a top two from every school, and HMH was the one program that was in every school's top-two choices.
Awesome.
So this money is an unfunded mandate, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
State is mandating that we spend for this program. Did I get that right?
You got that right.
Fine, it better work.
Also, the presentation from everyone involved was so well-done and very informative, so thank you.
Thank you.
And theirs.
They worked hard. They were very invested. I was very pleased.
It was a really great presentation.
I do wish I could have talked to them at eating that two cents.
I know. Right, the two cents.
But that's just my two cents.
Well, Ricky will pay for that.
Any other questions? Consent? All righty, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, at this time, we're going to go into executive session. Just kidding.
The IGA needs to be signed tonight, if at all possible.
Okay.
Like, county has asked.
We will vote on that once we come out of executive session. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, as well as to discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, authorize ordering, appraisal related to the acquisition or disposal of real estate, enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property subject to approval, and a public vote, or enter into an option to purchase, dispose of, or lease real estate subject to approval in a subsequent public vote.
Yes.
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 All righty, guys, we will go into the other room, and we'll be back here soon.
I like playing with toys.
I like my teacher.
I love Creaky.
I'm over the new friend, Creaky. Creaky is out this world.
I love Creaky.
Sims Academy is a career-prep school available to all high school students in Barrow County. Daily, Sims is filled with students taking dual enrollment courses, industry-specific CTAE classes, and Sims offered high school classes like construction. Pending the student's schedule, they may spend all day at Sims or utilize the BCSS organized shuttles to or from their home schools.
Sims is also home to many of Barrow County School System's unique programs, such as the Newcomer Academy, YES Program, and STEP Program.
Sims was the first school on the Innovation Campus before being joined by Linear Technical College, Barrow Arts and Science Academy, and Austin Road Elementary School. It began with a mission that continues to evolve to ensure the success of BCSS students and our local community.
The YES Program at Sims is a class for students with disabilities that are in their senior year of high school. The YES Program is partnered with the Goodwill Northeast Georgia, Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency, and High School High Tech with the goal of helping seniors be better prepared for the independent employment after high school.
Goodwill staff works with participants of the youth job training program to set career goals and equip students with the necessary skills to enter the workforce. YES participants can earn high school credit for job readiness, training classes, and paid work experience. The YES Program has three phases. Phase one, one transition class at Sims Academy during the fall semester of senior year. Phase two, a paid internship in the spring of senior year if the student has proven to be motivated and reliable. Phase three, full-time job placement after graduation.
The Student Transition Enrichment Program, also known as STEP, is a full-time, year-long school-to-work transition program for students with significant cognitive disabilities who have the goal of supported employment after high school. The STEP Program provides supportive work experiences in a variety of community business settings, as well as within common ground, the cafeteria, and various CTAE classrooms. It also gives students the opportunity to practice self-determination, self-advocacy, and independent living skills. This program has an application process, and students must be accepted for the IEP team to consider this service.
Sims Academy students can build a strong foundation for their culinary careers through our dual enrollment partnership with Linear Technical College. Highly qualified instructors from Linear Technical College teach students in the career and technical education programs available to students through Sims Academy.
The Culinary Arts Program prepares students for employment within many facets of the food service industry. Students will obtain technical skills training focusing on food preparation, sanitation, nutrition, marketing, catering, management fundamentals, and work ethics.
The Prep Cook Technical Certificate of Credit provides skills for entry into the food services preparation area as a prep cook. Topics include food services history, safety and sanitation, purchasing and food control, nutrition and menu development and design, along with the principles of cooking. Students who complete this certificate are positioned to earn several additional certificates that lead to a diploma or degree in culinary arts.
Sims offers students a hands-on opportunity to learn construction, carpentry, and electrical fundamentals. The construction pathway consists of four courses, ranging from fundamentals and safety to carpentry and electrical skills. These courses are designed to help prepare students for careers in the construction industry, and many graduates find work in the construction industry after completing this pathway. The motto that students have in the class is that anything worth doing is worth doing right the first time.
Barrow County Newcomer Academy was established in 2017 with the purposes of supporting high school students as they transition to life in the United States. Since its inception, the Newcomer Academy has served speakers of many different languages from all around the world. Instructors work with students to develop their English and product support in their academic classes. Additionally, the Newcomer Academy serves to support students with many unique challenges of adapting to life in new culture surrounded by a new language.
Sims Academy in Barrow County offers high school students a dynamic career prep experience with dual enrollment, CTAE classes, and unique courses. Sims is a direct path to a brighter future.
I've seen extremely competitive senior classes, but I've never been able to introduce three star students. Let's get started. I've got a lot to say. Appalachia's first star student is Ashton Graham. I'll let you hold this one, I'll talk about you. It's going to take you. Ashton is a four-year varsity soccer player and team captain. He is president of HOSA. He is vice president of the Science National Honor Society. He's also a member of NHS, Math Honor Society, BETA, and the Student-Athlete Ambassadors. He's also participated in the past in Youth Leadership Barrow and the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy. Since third grade, he's volunteered at Special Olympics, and I'm sure he will again this year. He coaches at the Piedmont Soccer Academy, and he's just a really super kind young man. He plans to major in biology and become a doctor, and he's deciding where he'll start that journey soon. I think scholarships are in his future. It's also really important to note that after all of that, doing all that he does, Ashton is also the 2024 valedator of his class. Congratulations, and it's been quite an honor to get to know you. I'm going to let you introduce your star teacher.
My star teacher that I chose, I had all the way back in third grade. He was the first guy to actually challenge me in my intellect and gave me opportunity to do work for fourth, fifth grade, middle school, all the way back in third grade. And, but it's not only that, why I chose him, the main reason I chose him was the effect he had on me and then all the other people around him outside of like a school, just academic setting. He, I had this one friend, I'm not going to say his name, but he was extremely smart as well, it's just he had some other things that held him back. And Mr. McCoy was the first person I saw that gave him the opportunity to showcase his knowledge in another way, and he was one of the smartest kids at the school. So, for that reason, I chose Mr. Carl McCoy as my star teacher. So, for that reason, I chose Mr. Carl McCoy as my star teacher.
Thank you, wow. I don't know what to say, but I'll say, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. It does mean a lot to be recognized. And thank you, Ashton. That was very kind of you to say. I thought I'd tell a story about Ashton from the first day of school in third grade, back when, that kind of says it all about him. Everything that his principal said comes out in the story. Forgive me if I get the dates wrong. It's been a decade. During our morning announcements, we would recognize, you know, okay, this, you guys, you're graduating in what year? And Dave, we're all saying 2024. So I cracked the joke. Oh, you're making me feel old. Then, I put a problem on the board. This is what I graduated in 1988. And how, how many years would pass in between your graduation date and my graduation date? And the kid's all puzzled. And this guy here, you have to picture an elementary school classroom 15 minutes into the first day of school where it's all about chill out, take your supplies out, you know, it's a big mess. And this guy, he's, he's got to solve the problem, so he tears into this pencil pack. Pencils fall all over the floor. He runs the sharpener, he sharpens it, he solves the problem, he's raising his hand, and it looks like if I don't call on him, he's going to burst. So I called him, and he came up with the right answer, of course. He said, 36 years. And one of the other students said, so does that mean you're 36? Or does that mean then you'll be 36 when we graduate? Thank you for that. And I said, well, maybe we can figure that out. And so, this guy, he starts figuring it out. And I said, well, some of the other kids have obviously figured it out too. And I said, well, Ashton, pick a couple of kids being in group with you, see if you can figure out how old I really am. So he picked two of his friends. And then I went on to show the other kids how to do the first problem. And when we were done, I called on Ashton, I said, Ashton, how old am I? And he said, can I let him say it? And it didn't dawn on me then, but the kid that he picked was one of his friends, and this kid struggled a bit, as I've learned every month went by. And he let this kid say it, and he let this kid explain it. Furthermore, while that kid explained it, he went and picked up his pencils off the floor. So it's, it was an honor to teach you, and you left me with lots of stories like that. But that's the one that really stands out. And good luck, and you're going to make a fine gastro mentor almost.
Being a star teacher in Appalachia years ago was the greatest honor of my career, and so it was really exciting for me to see an elementary school teacher chosen. And Ashton was really clear about, he, he started me off right and changed my education. So I'm really excited for the two of them. Our second star student is Nathaniel Mackson. I'm glad he's here and on time. When we were honoring a lot of academic honors, our top 10, our star students, our Val, our Sal, we waited on him. He made a grand entrance. And that's who he is, and we, we love seeing him in our hallways and doing all that he does. He's, he's an asset to Appalachia. Nathaniel was a member of the golf team for one year. He has played football for four years as a linebacker. All the, all the things. He plans to receive a bachelor's in business administration from the University of North Georgia, and I think he'll do fine with that as he currently has a 3.83 GPA. Nathaniel, please introduce your star teacher. And he's struggling with his voice, so we're going to...
I'm going to whisper for y'all today. So, I picked Miss Nathaniel Mackson because she just changed my outlook on schoolroom gym. I've always been somebody who like, really likes numbers, and they always click to me. But whenever I walked in her classroom, from day one, she's been a lovely teacher. She pushes me every day, and that's the reason I ended up taking college classes. I ended up taking Bushel number one, I loved him too, because of her. And I just appreciate that as a person. Thank you.
I'm going to summarize. She said he always loved numbers until he was in Ms. Atkinson's literature class. She taught him to love literature, and then he went on to take English 1101, and is the man he is today because of you.
Good morning. It's unusual that he can't speak. Always, and he's finally caught up with it. Mag, it's his nickname, is, was in the 10th grade. He was a great writer. He'd been asked for feedback. A lot of kids get really angry when you give them constructive feedback. He'd rewrite. He was great at writing, and we had many Socratic seminars and debates, and he would handle himself well, always. Couple times I want to have to say, hold on for just a second, but I will say that you were always, and you still are, the voice for the underdog. I started my day out with you, and we won't use names since you said earlier, but we had a young man in our class that was so super intelligent, but behavior would get in the way, and he would always push him. And if he could, sometimes I think he thought I was about to tackle the kid, so he would like, he would have sense, but he was always the voice for the underdog. And when pointed out, and when we would do that, and you remember, this young man was one of the smartest kids. He would speak up, and he would get involved, and you were the only person who could do that. We were speaking at the table about maybe teaching. I don't know about that, but I think he would do that. And I also wanted to say, great support system all around from the parents. I only have signs, and you've done such a great job. He's kind, handsome. I'm sorry, did I sound inappropriate? I'm older than his parents. You've done a great job, and this is the beginning of some really great memories. Just hold it back a little bit. And continue asking those questions. He would ask the right questions, and I actually want to end on this. Where do you stand with Julius Caesar? With Brutus? Did Brutus do this? Did he have daddy issues, or did he do it? Or run?
I don't remember.
Congratulations.
Alright, everyone need coffee? Y'all got time for one more? Appalachia's third star student is Colton Waylon. So Colton has played soccer for four years and club soccer for two. And the last two soccer games where I was freezing in so many layers, I don't think he was, and he never stopped talking to his teammates, encouraging them, telling them where to be and how to get better, but it was so positive and encouraging the whole game. So every time I was walking a lap and getting back to where he was standing, I couldn't wait to hear his encouragement of his team. He also played football his senior year. He is vice president of TSA. Colton participated in Youth Leadership Barrow, and he volunteered as a coach for two years and worked as a YMCA camp counselor for two summers. He's received the Georgia Certificate of Merit in 2023, a Scholar-Athlete Award in 2023, and Student of the Month in September of 2022. Colton is in the top 10 of the senior class, and he plans to major in accounting at UGA. Go Dawgs! Colton, congratulations, and please tell us also why you chose your star teacher.
Before I got in Ms. Atkinson's class, I had never liked, at all, at all, I hated. But, once I had her as a teacher, she pushed me to develop new ideas and really get, be able to put my words onto paper and say what I wanted to say. She really inspired me to become a better student, and with her help, I was able to now write a lot better, put everything on paper that I want to say in ways that would not be possible without her as a teacher. Thank you.
Hello again. Huge honor, and these two have the same YouTube max, and this is Sunshine, by the way. Sunshine, because remember the Titans, right? Sunshine, so that's his nickname. Where this guy was the voice for the underdog, this young man is one of the few students in 27 years of teaching that actually listens more than he talks. And in class, when we would have debates, he would listen, and when you would raise your hand, and he would participate, but when he would raise his hand, the kids would give you more attention than they ever gave me. Number one, because you listened, but number two, because I know that your parents will still be of kindness, and you respected others, and you listened to them, and again, you listened more than you spoke, and I always said, and a smile. You can't look at the smile, but a lot of it too. Again, great writer, but I was saying to you earlier, and again, it's been a while, but I can always remember to you, I remember you having like philosophy quotes, and you would speak up, and I'm like, how old are you? 50, 55? But he was, he was truly, he was saying things, especially Julius Caesar, that's my favorite. And he would make a comment and say that this philosopher said this, but truly, when I would look out at the, at your peers, they truly were focused on you, and that's a great power that I hope you continue to use when people listen. Because I think we're in a time where we listen sometimes to the wrong people, and you had it right every single time. And your parents, great support system, kind, people, people love you, and he's always smiling. I've never seen you once not smile. And I tell my students, it doesn't mean that you're not having a bad day, but you were able to come in there and turn it around if it was a bad day and be positive for everybody else. Again, you're going to have a great college career, and I hope you continue to inspire people, because both of you, I cannot tell you, this is a colossal honor of any that I've gotten in this amount of time. I'm super proud of you. And thank you, hang on a minute, like, these are the people that you need to talk to, but don't forget your counselors. Ms. Rayburn's here this year, but she's been, she's awesome. We love her, by the way, at Appalachia. Anyway, I'll be quiet if I know. I love you, young men. And I also thought, Ashton, you couldn't have chosen, of course, you are the, there's not three better people that could be standing up here, and Appalachia, you should be very proud. And I'll be quiet. Congratulations.
She's absolutely right. There aren't three better representatives of Appalachia than these three young men. And I want to just state really quickly that the three of them chose their teachers separate from each other. They were not in the same room when they chose, and they all three knew immediately who they wanted to pick. They knew immediately who had had the biggest impact on their educational careers thus far. And they chose Ms. Atkinson separately, which I think, Ms. Atkinson separately, which I think is a really big honor for her, and an elementary school teacher is the highlight of all of this. Thank you, three gentlemen, for being my first great resource.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Eggershed. I am a pre-k teacher at Auburn Elementary in Barrow County. So the pre-k program in Barrow County helps to prepare students for kindergarten by getting them able to socialize with others before they get ready to learn about how to read and how to function in the school system. So after our morning meeting, we will go into center time where kids will get to choose where they want to play, like in the math center, in reading center, reading books, and in block center, building things, and in home living, where it is just like a little house, and kids will get to just interact with other students. And the teachers in the classroom are basically monitoring them and helping them through their daily lives. So Barrow County pre-k is different from other counties because we actually do school inside of a school. We are actually able to interact with other classes, other kindergarteners, and they can see how other students, older students, are going to school. And they feel important because they're actually in the same building with other, with other students that are not their age. I think that parents should enroll their kids in the Barrow County school system for pre-k because it gives the students a sense of belonging to the school that they're going to be at. And also, because we love, we love the kids, and we love to be able to interact with them and get them used to going to school. So it makes a big difference in how they are able to go on to kindergarten. If you're thinking about enrolling, visit our website today.
Hey, everybody. Have you ever seen this book?
Peep the Cat.
It's a Peep the Cat book, right? Here, I'm going to sit down here with you. So this is about going to the library. Who's ever been to the library?
Me.
Pete's mom is taking him to the library for the first time. The librarian gives Pete his very own library card. Cool, says Pete. The librarian smiles. Time for the tour. And this is Pete's mom. Has anybody ever seen Pete's mom before? Not me? Pete's mom was in the second Peep the Cat book about going to school. It's called Rockin' in My School Shoes, and that was the first time you saw Pete's mom. The librarian takes Pete through the library. There is a big desk where people wait to check out books. Pete sees some of his friends reading at a long table. It's very peaceful and quiet. How relaxing. Who is this cat right here, this, this one? Does anybody know who that is? Who is that? Thank you. Pete has a brother, right?
Yeah.
And this is Pete's brother Bob, and Bob has green eyes, and he's black and white. I have a black and white cat like this now, but it's a girl, and her name is Abby. And Abby was not happy when I left this morning. The librarian takes Pete to her favorite room. There are lots of Pete-sized chairs and tables and she, and shelves. There are books of every shape, size, and color. So who, who knows who this is? Does anybody know who that is?
A frog.
Right, what's his name?
Grumpy.
Who said grumpy? Yay, yes, it's Grumpy. And this is Owl. And who is this?
Squirrel.
Squirrel, right. And does anybody know who this squirrel is? Callie?
Callie.
You know Callie?
Yeah.
Yeah, Pete's friend, Callie. And this is a platypus named Gus. Can you remember that? That's Gus. What do I do now, Pete asks? Now you read a book, the librarian says. Which book should I read, asks Pete? You can read any book you like, says the librarian. Pete looks around. There are so many books. Pete picks up a book all about airplanes and jets. Who likes airplanes and jets? Your brother does?
Yeah.
He reads it and pretends he is a stunt pilot. He flies a super-fast jet and does loop-de-loops and spirals high in the sky. Pete finds a book with dragons, wizards, and unicorns on the cover. He reads it and imagines that he is a powerful wizard using magic spells and a special wand to defend his castle against a fire-breathing dragon. to defend his castle against a fire-breathing dragon. So what is a unicorn?
A horse.
What is it?
A horse.
A horse with what?
A horn.
A horn, thank you. Very good. Next Pete opens a book about spiders and insects. Ooh, spiders!
I love spiders.
He reads it and imagines that he is a scientist studying all types of critters in the wild. He has to be very still to study some of the critters. Who has seen a spider? Anybody?
I've seen lots.
It's hap-
I've seen lots.
You've seen lots?
I've seen lots.
Around, around Halloween?
I've seen spiders.
You saw two spiders in your house?
I've seen a lot.
And what about butterflies? Who knows butterflies? Then Pete chooses a book with all sorts of scary monsters on the cover. It is a book of fairy tales. Pete reads it and pretends that he is in a dark spooky forest trying to outsmart a big bad wolf. Ooh, look at that wolf.
Yeah.
That's a, whoa, that's a scary one. I drew that picture. Pete puts that book back on the shelf. It is too scary. Pete opens a book about the pyramids. I love the pyramids. Do you know what pyramids are? He reads it and pretends he is an explorer riding a, what is that? Camel across the desert, right? And climbing to the top of a giant, what is that? Pyramid! Who said that? Awesome, awesome. And okay, here's a hard question. Who is that? A lion. They call it the Sphinx. You think you can remember that? Yeah. Oh, let me show you something while I'm thinking about it. Who knows who this is?
A girl.
A teacher.
Does anybody know who this is?
A teacher.
What's her name?
A girl.
This is Mona Lisa.
Mona Lisa.
Mona Lisa. You think you can remember that?
I don't know.
That's Mona Lisa. This is the most favorite, famous, famous painting in the whole world. So memorize it. Have you memorized it?
No.
Because guess what? You're gonna see this again. Okay? All right, that was your art lesson for today. Next Pete picks a book with all sorts of, what is that? Robots! Who likes robots?
Robots!
He reads it and imagines that he is a robot at a robot dance party. And Pete is dancing with a white cat with blue eyes and what's her name?
Callie.
Callie, that's right. His arms and legs make whizzing sounds when he moves. When robot Pete speaks, he says, what do robots say?
He speaks.
Next Pete picks up a book about superheroes. Who likes superheroes?
Me.
Me too. I like Batman. You like Batman?
I like Spider-Man.
You like Spider-Man? He reads it and makes believe that he is a superhero. He flies around the city in a colorful cape chasing bad guys and saving the day. Then Pete spots a book about, what is that?
A submarine.
A submarine, yes. He reads it and imagines that he is a scientist in a submarine deep in the Atlantic Ocean looking for, what is that?
A whale.
A whale and what is that?
A fish.
A fish, oh my goodness. Do you know what this green thing is?
A jellyfish.
Who, what? What is it?
A fish.
A jet, somebody said it, jellyfish? Jellyfish? What is, what is that? What is that?
A dolphin.
Dolphin. Dolphin. I love kids. There are many wonderful books to read at the library. Pete can be whatever he imagines with a book. Reading is super groovy. The end.
Appreciate it, Mr. Jennings. Thank you guys for having me. As you said, I'm Derek Maxwell, the principal at Winderberry High School. Like to thank the governor and investment in our students and for our meal. Thank the chamber for the hospitality as always. Thank the master's table for the extra inches of my waistline that apparently grew up. I have the honor of introducing the fabulous student as well as all that have gone before me, Mr. Nathaniel Corinani. If you'd come on down. First, I'd like to thank you for being just one. To keep this nice and short and sweet. And I want to say that Winderberry has obviously, for our existence being long, probably done most of our students, but at that rate, Appalachia would have to catch up pretty soon. So Nathan here is a phenomenal student. He is not one to go out for all of the activities and all of the awards. He's just straight up take care, takes care of business. Got the score, eats the breakfast, he's ready to go back and take care of business. What I have learned quickly about him is we ask students to fill out a brag sheet to help us kind of capture all the great things that they're doing. And his had a resounding thing and it was all about him giving back. He is super, super involved in his church. He provides missionary services to the folks that attend. He's mentored Romania on mission trips. And one of the things he was most proud of in his brag sheet, when asked about a certain prompt, the prompt was from one of his teachers, what would you do with $500,000 if you were given $500,000? Now, if you know teens or work with teens or have ever had any conversation with a teen, you can imagine all of the first things that came to everyone else's mind. But he, he gave 100% of his theoretical money back to people who did not have things like he did. And that, and then he chose to be the most proud of that. So that says a lot about his character, a lot about the things that he values. And for that, you know, the, the, that's a T score is slightly better than mine by a couple hundred points, but that is not, that is not most of what I'm proud of. And so he is also, I'll let him tell you about her, but he chose one of our finest, Dr. Whitney Bailey, who's a Winderberry High School graduate herself. Spent a little time in Kansas, clicked her heels three times, came on back. So we are very honored to have him and give some words about her. And we know that Nate's going on to do great things and that he's looking to UJ, Jack, pre-med, sees himself studying for the MCAT, getting ready to be a doctor in five years. I'm not sure where that will take him, but I know it will take him far and I know I'm super proud of it. I'm hoping to spend some time with his parents, they're super proud of him as well. So congratulations to Nate.
Good morning, everyone. To start off, I would like to thank my parents. I probably wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for them and how much they invested in my life as a kid. Me being the first child, my dad always saw the potential in me and gave me my everything. And we were even talking about it at the table, he was saying, most four-year-olds and five-year-olds want to become a copper or firefighter. But I said differently, I wanted to become a doctor since day one. That ties in with Dr. Bailey. She was always an amazing teacher on my behalf. I never really wanted to know what to do in the pre-med area. There were a bunch of different paths I could have taken, anesthesiaology and many more. And to her, when I was in her class, she was able to help me pick that path I wanted to go down and it's still going to be anesthesia. Dr. Bailey was always there for everyone in the class. She was there for mental support if we needed it, even when I was going through a hard day. When she saw me walk into class, the first thing she would say is, do you want a hug? Who would turn one down when you need one? Dr. Bailey was also very lenient on work-wise. Most students, when they hear presentations, they absolutely loathe them. They would probably run out of the classroom, skip the day they have to present. But Dr. Bailey managed to make all of us love presentations in that class. In fact, anytime Jeff was to do a project, she would be like, what do y'all want to pick? Something crafty, presentations? Everyone said presentations automatically. It was just, she was able to bring a smile to us through them and we were able to learn a lot through them. She would let us make DIY things during the project, like one of my topics was music therapy that was assigned to me and we made a DIY banjo that could actually play with rubber bands. So I wanted to thank Dr. Bailey for bringing out the most in me in that class and making my time in that class most wonderful my senior year.
I'm gonna be the teacher with notes because as you can tell, this guy is very special. If you know me, I tend to get emotional, so I'm gonna stay on point this morning. Good morning. I know that I only have a few minutes to convey how incredibly special Nate is, but I need to give you a little context first. I got hired as a healthcare science teacher at Winder two years ago after Ms. Bradbury, a very longtime, very well-loved teacher, retired. I took her class, so I knew how great of a teacher she was. And like I tell my students, no, I'm not going to tell you what year I took her class. On the very first day that Nate walked in, he sat down, he looked at his table partner and he said, I'm worried, she's not going to be anything like Ms. Bradbury. I heard it, I immediately became apprehensive because I knew that I had really big shoes to fill. I took the job knowing that, but it comes to life a little different when the students in the chairs make the statement. I gave my traditional first-class, I'm not Mrs. Bradbury speech, and I asked the students what I always ask, to give me a chance to make learning fun. And boy, did Nate give me a chance. He was the first one every morning to tell me good morning, usually with that big smile plastered across his face. And he was always the student at the end of the day to tell me to have a great day. Nate is easily one of the most intelligent students I've ever had the pleasure of teaching and I was a college professor in my previous life. He jumped into every activity and every presentation with excitement and without hesitation. He is as social as he is smart. He made friends with his classmates very easily. He always had a word for someone who was struggling, always there as a smile and a sense of encouragement. He's funny. He constantly had me laughing from some joke early in the morning. When I got the news in the middle of first period that I had a family member pass away, Nate was able to show concern and sympathy that you don't easily find in a high school student. He is one of the most well-rounded students I've ever had the pleasure to teach and to get to know. And to tell you how special he is, I'm a bulldog through and through. I spell my bulldog with two G's and I also spell it with a D-A-W-G. And when this student asked me to write a letter, a letter of recommendation for his admission to Georgia Tech, without hesitation, I said yes. And it was easily one of the easiest letters of recommendation I've ever had to write. I think it ended up being two pages, which isn't common for me. So I can't imagine anybody more deserving of this honor and to say that I'm proud of Nate is an understatement. Congratulations.
Thank you both of you guys. Proud of my books.
The YES Program is one of three transition programs offered in Barrow County. The program is designed to help high school seniors enhance their preparedness for independent employment post-graduation. Partnering with Goodwill of Northeast Georgia, the Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency, and High School High Tech, the program guides students through a three-phase training program. In the fall semester of their senior year, participants engage in a transition class at Sims Academy, earning one elective credit. This phase focuses on setting career goals and acquiring essential job readiness skills. Subsequently, during the spring semester, motivated and reliable students have the opportunity to embark on a paid internship, earning another elective credit. This internship serves as a practical paid work experience. The program concludes with full-time job assistance after graduation. Operating out of Sims Academy, the YES Program is available to seniors from Winderberry High School, Appalachia High School, and the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. The program's overarching purpose is to help students with barriers to employment, transition to the workforce after high school. The program achieves these goals with activities like tours to local manufacturing and distribution centers, on-campus training and employability skills, and paid internships with community partners. These internships provide a sheltered work experience, better preparing students for successful entry into the workforce. The YES Program at Sims Academy is a transformative initiative, uniquely positioned to empower high school seniors for independent employment. By seamlessly integrating classroom learning, hands-on internships, and community partnerships, the program not only equips students with essential skills, but also fosters a supportive environment that champions their journey toward a successful transition to the workforce.
Okay, Vicki, I'm so glad to be able to present you with a little token of our appreciation for being the March Community Member of the Month for Barrow County School System. Gretchen Hollingsworth nominated you for all the wonderful things you do for BASSA and the schools. Thank you.
Aw, thank you. I appreciate that and I love you.
I love you too.
My name is Vicki Keebler. I am the Senior Director of the Chamber of Commerce here in Barrow County.
I am Gretchen Hollingsworth. I'm the Innovative Learning Coach here at Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. You might actually not remember the first time we met. We met at CFIT. You came to-
Ah, yes.
-observe a presentation that the first Lego League team was practicing and I was helping out with the team that year.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. And they presented their gondola activity to Vicki and she donated her time to come in. You gave amazing feedback. In fact, you have gondola experience and so-
Yes.
-she brought just a wealth of knowledge to the presentation. It really helped the students. But more recently, we served on the school governance team together-
We did.
-here at Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy.
I miss that.
Every month would come, give good feedback, help us out. But even more so than that, just the way you connect to people in our community, your work with the chamber. One of your strengths, I think, is just keeping Barrow County that small-town feel, but still pushing the progress, connecting people, making sure that these positive relationships just continue to grow and grow. So I cannot thank you enough. Plus, she trusts us with her grandchildren here at BASSA and so we just think the, the world of you.
The SGT, it was, it was something that was, I was approached and asked to be on. I'm like, okay, tell me about it. When I learned what it was, especially here at BASSA, it was so big that, you know, we got to connect with the students, we got to make decisions about their graduation, their crest, you know? We helped with their fundraisers for their field trips. You know, we got to go into the classroom and watch the teachers and the students, which if you have not done that, it is amazing what these students are doing nowadays. And I was a little like, oh, do you really want somebody? And you know what? I am so grateful that I was chosen to be on it because I really miss it. That was wonderful, a learning experience. And that's what got me to get my two granddaughters here at BASSA. I just fell in love and I'm like, y'all have to go.
That is great. And it's, it's a time commitment for sure. And then when her term ended, she did not leave us high and dry. She actually helped us obtain two new community members, which bring such value to our school governance team and we appreciate that too because it is hard to, to lose people like you off the teams.
I was really surprised when I got the email and I was not surprised at Gretchen nominating me, but you know, it was, we connected right away. We did. We've connected straight through. It's just, it's just an honor to be able to be part of this school and with the newness of it and, and watching it grow and it's just fabulous. You know, I have to be honest, I have the best job on the, on the planet, if you ask me, because I get to meet all of y'all, you, I mean, and then I get to make connections for other people. And to me, that's just, I love doing that.
We love you.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you do for our community.
Thank you.
Welcome back to another episode of Beyond the Bell, a podcast from Barrow County School System. And today we're discussing family engagement and how we partner with our families to make sure- to make sure that our students have the best opportunity to learn. We're your hosts, Sierra and Robert, and today we have special guest Ramon Manzo.
Thank you for having me, Sierra. I appreciate the opportunity.
Absolutely. How are you doing today?
I'm doing well. How about you?
Pretty good. Will you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, so I am the Family Engagement Specialist for Barrow County Schools. I've been working here in Barrow County since the 2019-2020 school year as an employee. Previously, I worked a year as an independent contractor here with a different program. I will say, I simply just really enjoy working in Barrow County Schools. Little plug there. I was born in Illinois. I was raised partly there and then partly in Mexico for a few years. I actually graduated college in Mexico, and right after I graduated, I came over here, and here I am.
Oh, that's awesome. So we'll go ahead and get started. Will you explain what family engagement is and why it's such a crucial part of education?
So you see, that's, that's, that's an interesting question, simply because if you ask 10 people, they can probably give you somewhat similar, somewhat different. Just, it just depends on what, your interpretation of what it is. My favorite concepts or definitions would be that family engagement is an ongoing process, and it really is honing in on actively, promoting that active participation of all components, communication and collaboration between the school, the families, and the communities. And in doing so, we really want to make sure that the students succeed. My second favorite definition, so what, is that it's a, it's really a shared responsibility between the schools and the families, in which the school is really commit to collaborating with families in a meaningful way, and then families really commit to supporting their child's development and learning. Key points here to take away are success, learning, and development, just because we are not just preparing or wanting students to succeed in school. We want them to succeed in life. And that's what this partnership is about. We want to make sure that we work together to provide the necessary support for all three components and make sure that our students, which are our target, succeed in anything and any path they may choose. Why is it important? Just because it's been proven that if the school, the families, and the students work together, the students will have a higher probability to succeed in any path they may take. And this really takes many different forms. It doesn't just mean the parents are inside the school all the time. It doesn't just mean that they come to rallies, pep talks, stuff like that. It can, you can, a lot of the time, you see families who are actively engaging in child's education without necessarily being at the school. They can do it from home, using their own means. Sure, they, it can look like, you know what, I know that I'm not a professional in the area, so I can hire a tutor to help that student, because either I want them to increase the ability, or they may be not where we want them or where he or she wants to be, so we can provide that additional help. Or it could be, you know what, I contact the teacher and say, hey, I can't go to the school, but do you have any strategies? Do you have any resources that I could use at home to support that? And then we go on to the teacher's part, where the teacher can provide the supports, can explain how that works, can really help that family be prepared to support, because most of the times, our family, if not all the times, our family really want to support students. However, sometimes, they don't really know how. So that's where that partnership really plays, where they mutually support. So the teacher does all the heavy lifting at the school, and then the family does all the heavy lifting at home, and they kind of mirror that effort.
Absolutely. That was a great answer. Ramon, how does Barrow County foster a culture of open communication and collaboration between schools and families to create a supportive learning environment?
Okay, well, it may or may not address everything that you just asked, but what we do is called the Spring Planning Meeting, and it goes in conjunction with our comprehensive need assessment survey. So I'll focus just on the Spring Planning Meeting. During this meeting, our intention is, with the restructure that we had, to make it more of a conversation. We want to make sure that we provide a time and place for all our families, teachers, and other school staff to sit down and really talk about what went on this school year and what we think went well, what we saw, areas that we saw we could improve, and then kind of come up with draft plans, if you will. See what the parents identify, oh, I think you guys did this really well, because it's always good to recognize the efforts of the school. In the same way, it's always good to recognize the efforts of the families and the students. So letting know to schools, hey, we're happy that you guys did this. It was great, is really good input. And at the same time, hey, we would like to see this, because usually from the school system, we see everything through our own lens. And sometimes, it's a little bit difficult to see it from a parent's perspective. Even if we're our parents ourselves, it's just, we have our school system cap most of the time on, right? So we want to make sure that we provide that space so families can tell us, we would like to see this. We would like this to happen. We would, what can we do to partner? And then schools grab all that input and that feedback, and they use it when they're planning for, they're working on their school improvement plan during the summer. So if, I'll make a little invite here. If anybody has not participated in a Spring Planning Meeting before, please go ahead and do so. It is very important.
My name is Ms. Perry, and I am a pre-K teacher at Holsenbeck Elementary School. And I have been a pre-K teacher for four years here at Holsenbeck, and I've been actually at Holsenbeck for 16 years. Barrow County Schools' pre-K program helps students be prepared for kindergarten by giving them lots of hands-on experience. We do a lot of pre-reading skills. We talk about letters, letter sounds, differentiating sounds, rhyming words. We also read a lot of stories, work on comprehension, where students are learning to be active listeners and to explore ideas that are in stories. Children are able to gain number sense, begin gaining some number sense through counting, numeral recognition, shapes, things like that. We also do a lot of pre-writing skills. We work on a lot of fine motor development, strengthening their hands, which prepares them for writing stamina in kindergarten. We also do a lot of questioning, talking, listening, which is a pre-writing skill, a very important one, actually. Before students are able to express themselves in writing, they must be able to express themselves verbally. So that is another way that we prepare them. Our pre-K school day is very busy, and it is also very developmentally appropriate. We do a lot of music, movement. A lot of our learning is done through music and movement. We have large group activities, small group activities with teachers. There's a time in the day where kids are allowed to have free exploration time, where they self-select various hands-on center activities. We have playground time, which is just complete free play outside. We have access to our gym, especially on rainy days, and we do get to experience eating in the cafeteria. At the end of our day, we have at least a short period where we have a rest time. I would say being in the elementary school setting helps prepare students to be HES students. They become familiar with the procedures, the rules, the routines of our, of our school. They also are able to learn a lot about being in a classroom environment. Also, the Barrow County pre-K curriculum includes a very strong and meaningful social-emotional curriculum, where kids are explicitly taught how to advocate for themselves appropriately, how to get along with other students in a classroom, and basically how to participate in classroom life. And if you are considering entering your child into the Barrow County School pre-K program, please visit the Barrow County website.
We are so excited to welcome you to Appalachia High School. Get involved in extracurricular activities to make your high school experience more meaningful and find the group of friends that you will keep forever. One of the graduation requirements of Barrow County is that all students complete a pathway, which consists of a series of three classes in the same area. Take a look at our pathways and choose one or more that will help you in your career goals and find your niche. The Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps program prepares high school cadets for responsible leadership roles while making them aware of their rights, responsibilities, and privileges as an American citizen. The JROTC department has instruction in leadership techniques, citizenship, effective communications, land navigation, marksmanship, American military history, and physical fitness. The Teaching as a Profession pathway allows students to participate in various educational-related activities and learn about the different options for educators. Level two and three students partner with elementary and middle schools for observations and hands-on experience that helps prepare for college or career options. The audio/video technology and film class at AHS teaches students how to brainstorm, write scripts, use cameras, and edit to complete a movie production from start to finish. Students create short films, podcasts, music videos, create a brand logo, learn animation, and special effects. This pathway will help prepare you for Georgia's growing entertainment industry. The Healthcare Pathway gives an in-depth look into the healthcare field. Careers, medicine, anatomy, and clinical skills that can save a life are covered. Students have opportunities to dissect hearts, visit a cadaver lab, and earn industry certifications. Students can choose from two pathways in law and public safety, forensics, or corrections. Labs include handcuffing, fingerprinting, traffic and DUI stops, mock crime scenes, and mock trial. Guest speakers from many areas of law enforcement and public safety are part of the program. The Sports Marketing Pathway introduces students to the major segments of the sports and entertainment industry and the social and economic impact the industry has on the economy. Real-world examples are used, and students look at different ways companies promote their products to attract customers to the sports and entertainment industry. The Nutrition and Food Science Pathway explores personal choices for nutrition and wellness, as well as teaches basic knife and cooking skills. Classes teach how nutritional needs change throughout life and explore how food changes using scientific principles. Students complete the pathway with the option to earn a Serve Safe Food Handler certification. The Engineering Pathway is all about problem-solving and design. Students are challenged to design, build, create, and test products relating to all fields of engineering and STEM. Students use industry software programs such as AutoCAD and Onshape to design products to be 3D-printed or even laser-cut. The Veterinary Science Pathway covers the basics of animal care. Topics include diseases, parasites, feeding, shelter, grooming, animal behavior, general animal care, and veterinary procedures. Students are provided multiple opportunities to work with live animals and show skills during hands-on learning. The Agricultural Mechanics Pathway covers the basic of key skills that are important to all industries. Topics include electrical wiring, shielded metal arc welding, gas metal arc welding, woodworking, small engines, and differential leveling. Students are provided multiple opportunities for hands-on practice and incorporate and apply multiple principles. Students can choose from two pathways offered in the Information Technology Career Cluster, web and digital design, and programming, games, and apps. Web and digital design focuses on how to create and learn digital media applications using elements of text, graphics, animation, sound, video, and digital imaging for various formats using Adobe programs like Photoshop and Illustrator, as well as building websites. Programming games and apps is designed to help students strategize, design, and develop games as mobile and desktop applications. Our Spanish classes focus on communicating through reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We practice these skills as we explore the culture of various countries. We offer on-level or honors classes to complete a pathway. If Spanish isn't the language for you, senior counselor about taking another language through Georgia Virtual School. Remember, most four-year colleges do require at least two foreign languages. If you love band, you are in luck. From concert band to wind ensemble, we focus on transitioning from middle school to building leaders. Ninety percent of band students also participate in the marching cats and attend all 10 football games. There are competitions, parades, and festivals. Come make music with us. Fun and exciting, the Appalachia Chorus is full of amazing students that love to sing and perform together. We have concerts, competitions, and perform at other events. No matter what type of music you love, we have something for everyone. Did you know Georgia is one of the top three movie-producing states in the country? Theater is a chance to gain employable skills while making new friends. We have opportunities for actors, singers, dancers, and technical workers. We work on playwriting, acting, theater history, set building, and more. Strengthen the right side of your brain while using art as a communicative language. Painting, drawing, and three-dimensional work, as well as researching various artists and styles to help develop observational skills and combine ideas. You don't have to be an artist to make art. Just have a willingness to work through creative challenge. We hope you saw a pathway that inspired and interested you. Focus on your future and get involved. The Appalachia team will see you soon.
My name is Katie Tocado. I am a Georgia pre-K teacher at Bethlehem Elementary. This is my 14th year teaching Georgia pre-K and my fifth year here at BES. So I think Barrow County pre-K really does prepare children for kindergarten, but also just overall student success. It really does lay the foundation for success for kids in school. Students get to explore, they get to learn, and they get to apply all the knowledge that they learned in class. We get to learn important literacy skills like identifying letters, letter sounds, how to hold a book correctly, how to answer questions, lots of math concepts like counting, identifying numbers, patterns, sorting, and they really get to learn a lot about their social-emotional skills. Students get to learn how to share, how to work as a team, and just have those positive interactions with their peers and other adults. So we do lots of fun and engaging activities all throughout our pre-K day. We have morning meeting every morning, where students get to share something special maybe they did that morning, maybe what they had for breakfast. We have all kinds of music and movement that we do throughout the day, where kids get to sing and dance and really let out that energy that they have. We have psychological awareness time, where students get to learn their basic reading skills. We have small group instruction, where we break students up into groups based on maybe certain concepts that we might be learning in the classroom. And those are all teacher-planned, and they're really engaging and fun for the kids. We have center play every day, which is always a kid's favorite. Students get to learn through play. They get to learn how to socialize with one another, how to take turns, and they really get to use their imagination and be creative. And then, of course, we have recess, which is always the one they look the most forward to. We have awesome playgrounds at all of our schools. Even here at BES, we have two awesome playgrounds that the kids get to play on. So our day is busy, but it's fun, and the kids really do get to make the most out of their learning throughout the day. So I think that having a child here at Bethlehem or any Barrow County school is a huge benefit. They really get to learn and explore their school before they even get to kindergarten.
We've got a few things to vote on, so at this time, can I get a motion to approve? Let's see, the superintendent recommends signing the attached intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Barrow County Board of Commissioners to sell 48 properties the county acquired due to tax liens. Stevens, Ms. Malouf, all in favor? Motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the Hills Ace Hardware easement agreement as presented? Ms. Hendricks, Ms. Kelly, all in favor? Motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the temporary easement for developer at Auburn Elementary as presented? Ms. Stevens, Ms. Hendricks, all in favor? Motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the 2024-25 contract list as presented? Stevens, Ms. Bradford, all in favor? Motion passes. And last but not least, can I get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented? Kelly, Ms. Stevens, all in favor? Motion passes. If you'll notice, our next meeting date's next Tuesday at 6:00. We have our regular board meeting, and then we will have a call board meeting on May 13 at 5:00 p.m. to vote on the new superintendent contract, and then our work session on the 28th. If there is nothing else to discuss, sure, we're adjourned. Y'all have a good night.